And we are on item, looking at the consent agenda. Do we need to deal with anything separately? Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I do have a couple of questions with regards to the letter from Minister Steve Carr. With regards to a few items that he has mentioned in the letter.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Counsel Burley, seconded by Counselor Desai. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Item 6A, Kevin will be on deck, looking at the corporate financial update and year-end projection as of September 30th, 2019. Looking for a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counsel Keveney, seconded by Counsel Patterson. Kevin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Warden. If counsel is okay, I'm just going to kind of walk through the highlights of this report and they can ask questions at any time. So the third quarter of financial update here is in front of you and staff have taken that as of the end of September and then projected expenditures and revenues yet to occur and we've put that into this projection of year-end. So as a summary, the projected year-end surplus is we're projecting $1,415,000 surplus. Note, this surplus does not incorporate $92,300 in additional funding received specifically to cover cannabis legalization, nor the one-time modernization payment of $725,000 that we received. I'm interpreting those that they both have to be spent on projects that the government has identified and therefore I'm saying they just can't fall into cover deficits or just surplus to be used in a fashion that they were not provided for. The surplus also includes just $1,950,000 in net admitted supplementary assessment. So what I mean by net is we get supplementary remitted supplementary assessments that we earn, but we also learn of tax write-offs or vacancies, rebates that are approved and we have appeals that take many years to go through the system and those occur and then those cause write-offs. But the net amount there we're predicting is just over $1 million in surplus from that. Is benefit largely to the town of Blue Mountains. So we've heard the counselors not speak of that, so that's helping. So I'll start with highlights administration. Positive variance here about $429,000. We've had staff vacancies, about $92,000, which is delaying in hiring a financial analyst. A min assistant in the finance department retired and we're recruiting that position as a finance officer. We've sort of had to do a new job description change and work that through. Health and safety manager was seconded to the provincial offenses, so that a new position came into the human resources department and was paid at a different level and the timing of that. Investment income is projected about $285,000 higher than what I had budgeted. Big portion of that, about $116,000 of that is the bond market rebounding that we had corporate bonds with LES. We were, last year when you took the, what we were getting in interest and then looking at the market value in that, it was pretty much a wash, I think if you recall my investment report. So that's that, counsel. It appears to be on budget at this present time. Information services is anticipated the end of the year on budget. Weekly indemnity and our workers' compensation are self-insured programs. Weekly indemnity is looking at a surplus of about $19,000 based on the number and the length of weekly indemnity claims we have right now. Workers' compensation budget is projecting a year-end deficit of about $202,000. That even would have been higher without, we withdrew from the catastrophic loss insurance that counsel approved earlier. So as of the end of September, we've got healthcare and loss of earnings administrative fees associated with these claims of about $472,000. So we have had a number of PTSD or traumatic mental stress claims and those have been ongoing, some of them. Have to say we have fewer claims in 2019, so we're hoping with what Kevin and the paramedics have done with peer support initiative that counsel approved, that those are having positive impacts on that number, but it's too early to tell. It could be just good luck, I'm not sure, but anyway. If needed, if we do have a shortfall overall for uses of the surplus and we had to come back, there is a WSIB reserve when we're self-funding that we could access. Our assessment cost impact, that's in the year on budget. POA, we're projecting a deficit of about $30,000 after cost sharing with Bruce County. Gross revenues at the end of September are actually $53,000 higher, but based on comparisons for the fourth quarter when our ticket volumes drops, we feel we're going to end up with a shortfall here in our revenues. But ticket volumes are difficult to predict, I guess. Health unit and other funding initiatives projected end of the year with a surplus of about $189,000. I reported back in, earlier on, after the second quarter that was about a $15,000 surplus here. We were made aware that the health unit ended the year with a 2018 year with a surplus and they returned to us $173,000, Gray County's share of that surplus. Property, we're projecting to have a balanced position at the end of the year. Taxation and our grants budget, this is earlier I spoke to that we have the, we're projecting a million dollars, just over a million dollars in admitted supplementary taxation out of any write-offs. And as well, I spoke to the one-time modernization funding and the funding for the legalization of marijuana coming on, that funding as well I spoke to. Planning, anticipate the end of the year with a small surplus of about $5,000. Savings in the civic addressing budget as the printing of a new map book was less than what had been budgeted. Agriculture projected to the end of the year with a surplus of about $10,000. That's mainly as of the end of September, the coyote grant and the beaver grant expenditures being less than what was budgeted. Forestry and forestry trails, budget anticipated to have a slight deficit of approximately $10,000. Primary, that's just less revenue from the forest harvest. Trails anticipated end of year with a surplus of $40,000. Key here is the maintenance of the CP rail trail was initially budgeted at $50,000. Was anticipated the grain and material would be required following the grading of the trail that took place in 2018. However, this additional grain material has not been required. Economic development, projecting a year-end operating deficit of about $175,000 and a balanced capital budget. This is the startup year for that community hub, the Sidnum campus, and external scenarios have impacted the planned process of securing revenues or tenants and staff is working with partners and other levels of government to renovate this building, improve building systems and introduce programming and secure tenants right now. And Savannah has been here and spoken that in the past. Tourism, a year-end surplus of about $20,000. There was a staff vacancy for a short period of time that someone retired and then hired someone and then that person left as well. Gray Roots anticipating ending the year on budget. Their retail sales and their special event emissions are actually surpassed their 2019 expectations, but they're being offset by higher maintenance of some equipment and what we're seeing in snow removal. Ontario Works projecting year-end surplus of about $142,000 or $143,000. Average monthly caseload is about 1272 for the first nine months compared to an anticipated caseload of 1,340. Part of this surplus is really being, the government announced this year in 2019 that our approved funding was going to be cut and it was being based on our 2018 actuals. So that required about $396,000 overall gross spending that had to be cut. So what has occurred, there was some staff that had left and stuff, we've not filled those positions to reduce that budgetary shortfall. And that's what we're anticipating with our 2020 budget is we'll still have to remain at that 2018 funding level with the province. Childcare projecting a year with a surplus of about $25,000. Again, some savings in positions that weren't filled. There's also with, we've got funding for expansion, which is provincial funding for childcare and then we have early learning and childcare ELCC funding, which again was a federal to help expansion of childcare. We're having difficulties really trying to expand the childcare programs because of staffing, again, it's another, seems to be a theme. So operators aren't willing really to, until they can have the staff, they're not willing to undertake this, taking on more money and stuff. So it's something that staff's working on and they're meeting, they've had meetings with the partners, the stakeholders, the operators and stuff, so we'll continue to work on that. It's a chicken and egg thing, right? You got, I'm sure people want to look and find daycare, but we can't find ways to get these open. Housing, projecting the end of the year on budget. Long-term care portfolio, looking at a deficit of about $170,000. Parts of that were, we had budgeted like 2% increases ministry funding from various ministry envelopes. We did not receive 2%. We also, our CMI has dropped, which is causing problems. We've had overages in staffing costs, meaning you've heard discussions about unfilled shifts or people canceling at last minute, so other people were being called in and being paid overtime and stuff. But then also with the end of the management contract and other savings, we're having a net position of about a deficit of 170. I think I projected this higher back in the midterm and that was at that time, the structural compliance and the high wage funding was to end in 2019 and the government now has announced that that won't happen until 2020. So that's improved this portfolio somewhat. And then transportation services, projecting an operating deficit of about $300,000 and about $750,000 capital surplus. They've got over expenditures in pothole patching, brushing and pavement marking and winter maintenance is projected to be over budget. Then on the capital side, they've got all seven of their capital projects tendered and are close to completion and based on that, they're rejecting a $750,000 surplus there and I think it was Gray Road 40, the pulverizing page job that was your biggest savings there and come in under. And then paramedic services, projected the end of the year with a $340,000 operating deficit. Part of that was we had anticipated a one and a half percent ministry inflationary increase. We didn't get that. We only received $67,000. So that resulted in a shortfall of just over $108,000. There was also some other staffing issues that have gone into, that have occurred in that department and if you want further information on that, you'd have to go into closed session. So overall, the county's departments are projecting a corporate year-end surplus of And I said, again, I would just say that doesn't include the $725,000 in revenue we received for the modernization payment, nor the additional $92,300 that we've received for the recreational cannabis legalization. And again, a big chunk of that, that surplus is a million dollars in the admitted supplementary taxation that has primarily come from the town of Blue Mountains. So I'd try to answer any questions I can and there's other finance staff here too that have worked on these that I can ask for assistance too if I can't help.
Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. One of the questions I have is with regards to the cannabis funding. We do have an organization that we have council members sitting on, the Gray Bruce Drug and Alcohol Strategy Group. I was wondering, over lunch Kevin gave me the parameters for using that cannabis funding. And one of the uses for it is to conduct an integrated public awareness campaign to communicate the rules and regulations for recreational cannabis and educate Ontarians about the health and safety measures in place to protect them. The group that I mentioned, the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy Group, does do a lot of education work for other substances as well. I was wondering if maybe there would be support around this council table to look at using some of that fund and funneling it to this particular group in order to have
So the correspondence that we got from the province in November of 2018 spoke to some specific things. Municipalities must use this funding to address the costs that directly relate to the legalization of recreational cannabis. Enforcement, response to public inquiries, paramedics, fire, bylaw and policy development. So I'm not sure if the other would qualify for that, but it's certainly something that we could approach the province to ask that question.
Yeah, the letter goes on and this one talks about campaigns. But again, it would have to be something we'd run through the province, for sure. I did say to Counselor Desai, with paramedic services and housing, I don't think we've seen the extent of the impact of this yet. What I mean by that is I'm not sure what's going to happen in our housing units once plants start being grown there and all the other issues that might come along with that and things like that. So I guess that we're kind of a wait and see to see where the need for this funding was, but anyway.
I can also speak to, the county is working and our Director of Legal Services is actually working right now on the development of a new smoke-free bylaw in accordance with the new regulations and legislation coming out. So that will also require some new signage around all of the county properties. And I know when we implemented the smoke-free bylaw for Gray County several years ago, we worked with the health unit and provided signage to our local municipalities as well. So there will be a cost associated with that once it's implemented.
Counselor McQueen?
I think, Madam Clerk, that was a lot to do with the nine-meter rule too. Just a couple of comments and maybe back to Sue Patterson with regards to the Gray Bruce Health Unit in the sense of their publication and that, we don't have a store yet, right? There's no store. So it's not really immediate into our area. But I understand that there's, from what I'm gathering, the edible side is going to be a whole new ballgame. And if there's no limitation on that, maybe we just hold off and work with the Gray Bruce Health Unit. But I understand the edible side is something that maybe we want to, and if there was a store, and I don't know what's, anybody can tell me with the layout of more bricks and mortar? I know they, originally was it 50 stores and then now there, where other provinces are just all out there, right? And I think if you listen to the business report, I think there's a real disappointment on the business side of cannabis where it just didn't take off like I think they thought it was. So maybe we got a real bonus when we got this money because obviously maybe from the provincial government, they didn't get the revenues even to support us getting this money, right? But I would just suggest maybe we just hold off and wait. Thank you, just in the sense of on the edible side and see what rolls, what happens there, but just a thought.
Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Warden. I agree with Counselor Desai's comments around the Drug and Alcohol Strategy Working Group. They leverage the dollars very well with all the free labor they get from the member agencies, social service agencies throughout Gray and Bruce County. Maybe we can bring it back to our Drug and Alcohol Group to develop a bit of a business case for how that money would be spent and present that back to counsel.
Counselor Bartnicki?
I'm in favor of investigating a little further to see what the ministry's saying, what our drug and alcohol agencies are saying, and also where those stores have already been legalized. We could inquire about the impacts that are already happening in those communities to learn in advance what we have to prepare for and be proactive about putting things in place instead of reactive.
Counselor Silver.
Yes, you did mention that there was, that our legal department was working on some policy development. Are we in a position to capture that time out of administration and put those costs towards this funding?
I would say yes, based on what I've read, on the letters I have, that the costs of your bylaw and stuff, right?
The examples of permitted costs include bylaw and policy development. For example, police, public health, workplace safety policies.
I see no one else, so I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Thank you, sir. On deck is Anne Marie. We are dealing with Ontario Housing Priorities Initiative funding allocation. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counsel Woodbury and seconded by Counsel O'Leary. Anne Marie?
There we go, good. There's two parts to this report, actually. First part being that the Ottawa Heights development that we're looking at continuing on, we have an opportunity, hopefully, to complete the 54 units. In order to do this, we received some funding through the Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative from the province earlier and I brought a report back to counsel saying we were going to take the three years of funding and put it towards the build. We've been working with the province and they are, have worked out, I guess, a deal in which we can put all of that funding into this year so that we can better support that build. So it's just a little bit under the $1.5 million and that would go towards developing affordable units for the Ottawa Heights. In talking with the province, there is some funding remaining at the province, leftover in the COCHE program, which is the Canada-Ontario Community Housing Initiative. The province has reached out to say they have extra funds that could be used towards this development in order to ensure that we can increase the number of affordable units to make the build worthwhile. Our 1.4 million would get us approximately about 10 or 11 units out of the 54 that would be affordable. With increased funding, we can hopefully increase that number. Optimally, Owens Sound Municipal Housing Company was looking at hopefully providing 43 units of affordable housing and the remaining would be at market. I do not have confirmation from the province on an amount, but it is time-sensitive and they did ask that I approach counsel and ask that our transfer payment agreement that we signed originally be amended to include extra and new funding. Unfortunately, I don't have that amount today, but it's a good opportunity for us. It provides the ability for the apartment building to be completed in one phase and also provides more affordable units for the County of Gray.
Questions, anyone? I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. Anne Marie? Savannah Myers is on deck. We're dealing next with item 6C, leasing at Sidnum Campus. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counsel Burley, seconded by Counselor Desai. Savannah, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Warden. Here to talk today about leasing at Sidnum Campus. So I brought an update a couple of weeks back about where the progress has been made, but now that we're actually getting ready to start signing leases, we just wanted to provide an update on that specifically. So over the next couple of years, attracting tenants is going to be absolutely key. As you know, in our business plan, we have a six-year plan to be self-sustainable that only happens if we have tenants in the building. So that is an absolute focus and Steve Furness has been taking the lead on that. So without him, I would not be here today talking to you about this. I owe him big time. And also with the assistance of the Greatmans team because making sure we get these leases right is really important and they help us navigate this process because we are not equipped to be able to do that on our own. So thank you also to them. So as you know, much of Sidnum Campus is going to be leased to partners, organizations, new and scaling businesses to really fulfill that vision and that goal of Sidnum. It only will be what it is supposed to be when we have the right people under that roof, sharing those resources and that expertise and that passion for business. So through the business planning process, Jamie Doran provided us a list of tenant criteria because again, we don't want to be in competition with our local landlords. The intent of this is to really get businesses started, make sure they get through that first, you know, two or three-year period where things can be a little bit iffy and then push them out into the community where those opportunities are available for lease. So we included the tenant criteria in here so you could see what that really looks like. Everyone needs to be offering a training of some sort, expertise that are going to advance individuals, employers and businesses, providing that educational and professional upgrading certifications, providing learning and work experiences for co-op, apprenticeship and other students because that is really important. We see this as a pipeline to continue our youth moving through and then staying in the area as part of that retention campaign. We want innovative businesses, businesses that benefit from being in a shared space. Nobody will be able to come into this building, close their door, do their own thing, whatever time they're there, and leave again. It really is an open, shared space where everybody needs to be collaborating and working together and sharing those expertise so that we can advance innovation opportunities here. And then research as well. We see a real good potential with research and Georgian College too is starting to take a new look at research potential. So there's a nice synergy between the two. And then everyone needs to be committed to that shared and common vision of Sidnum. So the leases, they're going to vary greatly by square footage. I mean, it could be a small temporary office desk that is literally a 10 by 10 square and that's it. And you have no guarantee of getting that two days in a row. It's whatever's available, first come, first served. But it could go up to 10,000 square feet or more of leased space. And in terms of time, it could be daily, could be weekly, monthly, or it could be multiple years, 10 to 15 years in some cases, as some of the conversations we're having because of the level of renovation that they would require, they're looking for long-term lease potential. So there's only really two that would be of that scale that could happen, but we want to be prepared for them now, so we wanted to bring this report forward. So at the time, we are going from the delegation of duties policy, which allows the warden and clerk to enter into these leases, but we do want to let you know that any lease that we have that is looking at a longer than 10-year period or over $100,000 annually, we will bring a report back to you so that you can take that for consideration before we make any signatures. So that will happen. And probably the most exciting part about this is that this week, our first signed lease is coming in, which is really, really exciting. So I do want to share who they are with you. You're the first to hear. It's Beisho Physical Therapy. And why are they there? Because they are going to be doing innovative research on cancer treatment rehabilitation. Nobody else is doing it in the area. They are going to be bringing university students into the area. They're looking at ways to connect with Georgian College and the hospital right down the road because of our location. So they are working with all different tiers of healthcare providers to start this research and to offer these specialized services and we're very excited that this gets to be our very first story. So they are starting to move the equipment and the lease is coming in this week and it it fits every one of those application criteria. So each individual has to fill out the application, which will be attached to the lease because we want to bind them to this. When they say this is what we're going to be doing, and this is why I meet that criteria, it needs to be part of that lease. So that is our first good news story that is hot off the press today, but we did want to share that and just keep you informed that leases are starting, and anything large scale will be coming back to this table. So, thank you.
Thank you, Savannah. Are there any questions? That is great news. I want you to know we're really proud of Savannah because she was, everything she learned, she learned in Hanover.[1000.12][1000.12](Laughter). Anyways, I think we're ready to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Okay, we're now going to go back and deal with Item 5B, the correspondence from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Did I miss something? No. I need, we should probably put it on the floor, right? Counselor Desai, will you move putting it on the floor? Seconded by Counsel Mackey. Thank you. I saw him twitch. Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. One of my first questions on this one is with regards to the suggestion from the minister that they might be looking at aligning the fiscal years for the province and the municipality so that they're identical. My question through you to our staff is, other than the obvious challenge of will it be three months of the Wild West or a 115-month budget on a one-off, what position is our staff taking on this? Are they generally supportive of it, or are they wary of it and would advise against it? The second question I had was with regards to the voters list. The suggestion is that there would be one voters list maintained. Now, the way voting works on the municipal level and the provincial level is significantly different because municipal voter lists are based on property ownerships and not residents. So how would that work out, I guess, is my question. Yeah, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden, with regard to the potential change or alignment of municipal fiscal years, I don't feel, I don't think that as staff we have particularly strong feelings one way or another. I can see both benefits as well as some challenges with this. We have a lot of procedures, a lot of policies, a lot of agreements that are based on the current calendar year, so there would need to be a lot of thought put into making adjustments to those things so that everything aligned cleanly. I know that Kevin raised the point that there would need to be a transition at this. So some year are going to be 15 months long? We don't know that for sure. Certainly, we can work with whatever they're doing. As far as the benefits go, sometimes we run into challenges just because the difference in fiscal years means that they're in a position to announce things or launch things at a time that doesn't seem always to align as well with our annual cycle. So you get, you know, things that happen outside of a budget cycle that really it would be nice to have known so that you could put some resources towards that. We found ways to, you know, make that work, but it's more challenging in the smaller municipalities, I think. So, I don't know, Kevin, do you have anything more about the fiscal year piece?
Just that there is not a lot of information on other than this statement, and I'm sure that the associations, municipal finance officers and AMCTO and stuff will play an active role. I'm sure AMO would, too. It would be. Kim highlighted, too, a lot of, I know a lot of our provincial funded programs, sometimes they drag into August or September before we're getting funding announcements cleared up. And, you know, on our annual budget, then we're nine months in, and it's hard to change things. So I know a number of times the paramedics with the community paramedicine programs would be sitting out there not knowing what's happening and stuff. So I guess it's a wait and see and learn what they're thinking. Are they phasing it in, you know? Like, is it a 15 a month, or is it a one-year 13, next year 14? I don't know. But there'd be software changes and stuff that would have to be looked at and things. But, no, it's a good rate to raise it so everybody's aware that this is something being thought about.
I can provide just a very minimal bit of information about the voters list in that I know that the AMCTO, so the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers, this is something they have been advocating for for probably a decade. So they are very, very happy that this streamlining of the voters list is coming into play. They're seeing that as quite positive.
Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. With regards to the voters list, why? And again, the question of how do they reconcile the fact that municipally, residence is not the only criteria? There's also property ownership regardless of whether you live there or not, whereas with provincial, residency is the only criteria. How do they reconcile that?
I know that part of this was the challenge that creating and maintaining a voters list posed to your clerks in your individual municipalities, that this was a difficult job, that people weren't always as equipped to deal with as you would have hoped. It takes up a significant amount of people's time, and it felt a little bit like no matter what you did, it was never going to be perfect. And then you hear about it. So I know that that was part of the driving force for taking this away from the municipalities because every time there was an election and there was issues with the voters list, it came back to your local municipalities who were really only doing the best that they could with the information that they had.
Counselor McQueen.
Good discussion. I will say that probably from a provincial perspective, they probably, if it is addressed, they have your driver's license, your health card, your hunting card, or whatever other card you have that's registered with the province, they have that by your residence. So they have the advantage over a municipality where the municipality only is based on property and tenant information, and through impact, they're supposed to collect the tenant information. But if you're a landlord, you're supposed to send in the tenant information, and a lot of times that doesn't happen. And there's a lot, and I think from a perspective of tenants, they actually lose out probably the municipal opportunity to vote because they're just not on the list or they just don't realize. But I don't know, the other thing with provincial, I know federally, you get a card in the mail to where you vote. I don't know, provincially, I can't remember, a year ago last June, if they got a card. But, so then there's sort of that spurring on, you got to go here to vote, you know, and that kind of stuff. Where municipally, just, you see it, you read it in the paper, but you don't get anything to say this is where you go to vote, right? And mind you, a lot of municipalities have gone to the internet or other types of voting, so you really, it's made it easier that way. And I don't know if the government's looking at doing that either. I guess that's the other side. On the flip side, is the provincial and federal government looking at alternate ways of voting? We'll just leave it at that.
Counselor Bartnicki.
In our area, and I'm sure in a few others, too, 40 to 52% of our population are part-time residents, and they have the right to vote where they rent or own property. So we do have them voting, a lot of them. If we go to a provincial list, I would think they would most likely be voting in their primary residence, which is the one usually used on their licenses and those other cards. And that would almost take them out of our local voting process sometimes. So that's a bit of a concern. Yeah, it's a little bit of a concern. I'm not sure how that would actually impact municipalities that are like us.
Okay, we've had a, oh, Counselor Soever.
Yes, following up on Counselor Bartnicki's comment, according to the census, we had 7,025 people in 2016, and our voters list was 12,066. So on our voters list, if you segregate it by resident, non-resident, there's slightly more non-resident addresses. So if they can't vote, the question is, do they still have to pay taxes?
Okay, good discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. We're on to Item 7. Is there any other business?
Counsel, you'll be aware that Roma Delegations requests are due on the second of December. So next meeting, on November the 28th, we will be looking to confirm the delegations that we wish to request at Roma in January. So I'm just, I'll leave that with you for your thoughts, but we will have a prepared list of things from a staff perspective for your consideration at the next meeting.
Counselor McQueen.
Just following up from this morning's presentation at our long-term care discussion, are you sending out that site plan and that information that was presented this morning? I didn't see it.
Sorry, that was provided to the Committee of Management and could be part of the minutes of that, so Tara will make sure it gets posted on the website, okay? Yes, we'll add that as well.
Okay, is there any? There we go. Is there any other other business? Other, other? Moving on then. Item 8, any notices of motion? Counselor Bartnicki.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In a nutshell, I'm bringing a notice of motion that is related to the Gray County CIP prioritization of attainable housing and our decision on September 26th at this council to encourage all lower-tier municipalities to gather their supplementary assessments. So what I would be asking for in this motion, which I have already forwarded to the clerk, is that we have a staff report come to council to look at the impacts of allowing each municipality to keep its supplementary assessment in the year only that it is raised, given that it is outside of the levy and the budget process in that year. So I will bring that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bartnicki. Are there any other notices of motion? Seeing none, then. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Thomas, I see you blinking your eyes, and Counselor, looking over here. Is it Gamble there? Yeah? Yeah? Oh, he's left, okay. Counselor Burley.[1773.11][1773.11](Laughter). Seen that he's already halfway out of his chair.[1777.11][1777.11](Laughter). All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. The Committee for...